Wellbeing, extra meeting for the 3rd of March. And thank you all for attending. It's good, we're on Zoom again, so I think that's nearly 12 months of Zoom now. Folks, so if you could all turn the cameras and mics off when you're not speaking to keep us in order. We are recording this meeting, but that's so that we can purely do the minutes and for no other purpose. And if you've got any questions, if you can use your hands and I'll try and keep an eye and Paul as well on the chat. So we don't miss anyone. We've three excellent presentations today. We've got our Director of Public Health, Dr Sadeh, with a first ever report to us as Director of Public Health, concentrating on Covid and recovery and equalities. And that really is an excellent piece of work for us to look at, considering it's been done in these difficult times. Nigel will present to us the final draft of our new health and wellbeing strategy. And if we, and we will then take that out for any final comment before we finalize it again. On improving health and reducing inequalities is our theme. And our third presentation, last but not least, is Emily with our new homelessness strategy and actions, which again is done in conjunction with our borough and district colleagues. So three very meaty items for which we've called this special meeting. Because I certainly think, and I'm sure you all will agree, they are worthy of that and we need to get them into public domain. So if we can move on then to apologies. I have Russell Harding on my list. Paul, have you any more please?
Thank you Chair. I think some of the people I was expecting apologies may have been able to join us. I know Diane Whitfield said she may be late, but I think she's on the call already. Julie Grant from NHS England Chair has submitted apologies for today. Thank you. I've submitted apology Chair, it's Dave Parsons. I'm afraid we've got a very poorly dogged, the only time I could get a vet's appointment was 3 o'clock this afternoon. So I shall have to leave immediately.
That's a great, great day. Totally understand. We'd all be doing the same. So can we move on to item two, which is Members' Disclosure of Pecuniary and Non-Pecuniary Interests? Do we have any? No, that's fine. Then if we could move to the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of January. Are there any issues anybody wants to raise? I have none. In which case can we take those as noted and you've all seen? Yep, thank you very much. And then we could move to Chair's announcements. Counselor second.
Yes, thank you very much. I feel it is absolutely dependent on me to notify the fact that this chair is your last meeting, chairing the Warwickshire Health and Wellbeing Board. And I feel I absolutely want to express our thanks to you for the wonderful leadership that you have shown and the way you have driven forward the agenda of partnership working, of equality, of understanding of all partners involved and the services that are provided and a shared agenda on that. It's been absolutely fantastic. I was very lucky and fortunate to have had the same portfolio that you have some years ago now. And you know, we started a journey then and I can only say it has been in far more capable hands ever since. And I'm so grateful Les for everything that you have done for Warwickshire and all the leadership that you have shown that has driven us into a really good and strong position that actually many people and many other areas are looking to Warwickshire about what we've done and how we've got there. So that absolutely is down to you in combining everyone together, understanding the complexities of partnership working, but also understanding the urgency of taking that leadership and doing it together. The ability now to say that Coventry and Warwickshire is as one is a fantastic achievement. Really, really is a fantastic achievement. And you know, it would be a huge underestimation just to let that go without the recognition of what you've done. So I'm immensely grateful. I will be incredibly sad to see you go, as I know will many, many other people. And we will owe you a debt for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you Izzy. That's much appreciated. Nigel?
Thanks Les. It feels kind of odd. It's very rare that officers get the privilege to thank members for their work. But clearly my role in the Health and Wellbeing Board gives me the opportunity for once to do that. And I just really wanted to add to Izzy's thanks really. I'm not going to try and comment on your 30 years of experience in the public sector and your contribution across everything. And I know as well as the children's role before this, the role as Chair of Health and Scrutiny and all of those kind of things. But I did want to say a little bit about the time that I've been here as Director and your contribution to the Health and Wellbeing Board. And of course to the Place Forum. I don't think anyone would doubt your enthusiasm, your knowledge and your commitment to the role of Chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board. And that real desire to make sure that all parties are heard, which I think is a really key element. I know lots of people weren't here that are on this call around the start of the Place Forum. But obviously as you had a really important part in that and of course the concordant that underpins the Place Forum too and development of that. And it was really great to be at the Place Forum yesterday and to hear your counterpart in Coventry. You know praising your contribution to the work to the whole system. So it's not just about Warwickshire. You know, I thought that was a really telling kind of piece of thanks really in terms of the system. I could go on about the different things that you've contributed to. The Year of Wellbeing is a really good example of that. And I keep coming back to that. People keep reminding me that through social media and other forms, over a million people engaged with the Year of Wellbeing. And I think that is a fantastic legacy to be taking away with you. I suppose the other thing that I wanted to mention very briefly was, you know, a recognition that you've been the portfolio holder for Public Health during a pandemic. Not necessarily a job that everyone would be applying for. But I did want to comment particularly on the Member Engagement Board. And I think it goes back to that reflection that the Member Engagement Board could have been a kind of a secretive back door kind of operation. There were no parameters, no guidelines. But actually it's been a really broad, really open one with, you know, members from across the councils in Warwickshire being able to take part and contribute. And I think again, that's really indicative of the approach you've taken. I'd love to talk about Good Gym and Pitter Futures and Park Runs and all the other things you've championed too. But I could take up the whole of the Health and Wellbeing Board. So I suspect I'd better stop there and say, thank you Les. And I know that the officers in my directorate who work with you on a very regular basis will miss you.
Thank you Nigel. So Chris?
Well encore, as they say. I want to very much do endorse what both Izzy and Nigel have said, obviously from my perspective within the Coventry and Warwickshire Health and Care Partnership. You've been a great ally and supporter Les. I've particularly valued your own personal style in the discussions we have and the way you've welcomed me as an outsider into Coventry and Warwickshire and the ability you and I have had to work together with many other colleagues. So it's a personal thanks from me for making it so easy in the work we do. But I'd echo everything that's been said and I would stand back because I've had the opportunity as the partnership working has developed to see how things are in other parts of the country. And I can say this hand on heart, not just because it's this occasion. I think we're way ahead of most other areas in terms of the quality and the maturity of our partnership working across the NHS, local government and indeed into the voluntary and community sector. And that stands us in good stead with the changes we know are about to be taken forward by the government in the legislation on health and social care and to put us in a very strong position to show what it really means when integrated care systems become statutory bodies. And you've contributed a great deal to that. So we'll miss you hugely. But I just wanted to thank you personally and on behalf of the partnership colleagues for your own leadership and the huge contribution you've made.
Thanks Chris. Chris Bain?
Yeah, thanks Les. I didn't want to let you go without saying a big thank you on behalf of Healthwatch. I joined Healthwatch in 2014 and you've been a great friend and ally since day one. I often think about our days back in 2014, 15, 16 when you and I met with John Lennon and Phil Robson to talk about, to talking about strategy and the way forward. And I think it's no exaggeration to say that you played a significant part in helping to shape the way Healthwatch works now. And when I think of you, I think of somebody who is a consistent champion for positivity, a consistent champion for working together. And from my perspective, above all, a consistent champion for patient voice. I'm not sure that patient voice and the involvement of people in the development of services would be as far advanced as it is now in Warwickshire without your input. And so I will miss you Les and I've really enjoyed working with you. I think your greatest legacy will be that we won't notice all the things you did until you're not doing them anymore. And I think we will miss them. And so I wish you well Les and unfortunately for you, I know where you live. So when we have events and we're looking for somebody to chair or speak, you may be hearing from us again. Thank you so much Les.
It'd be a pleasure. Thank you Chris. Judy?
Well I think Les and I have known each other, I don't know how many years Les. Les was chairman of the district-
The 10s isn't it? 10s if not 20s.
Les was chairman of the district council when I was deputy. And when I should have really been supporting him and Jenny, he was supporting Steve and I. He showed us how it should be done and I think we've kept in touch ever since. I've been portfolio holder now at the district for two years, not for three. Going in a very, very new role for me, having been in opposition for so many years. But Les was there. I needed any advice or where do I go or you know, what do I do? Les was there for me. And I think I'd like to say thank you for the districts, for all districts. Because you know, we don't always agree. But you've always tried to involve us in everything that's our, both through officers and through councillors. So we really do appreciate that. We feel we are a partner and always keep challenging because that's what we do. And we should. So again, I think you said something to Chris yesterday about, you know, a good meeting and how to get it out to the public. And I think you've always tried to do that. You've always tried to let the public know through us or YouTube or whatever what we're doing. And I think that that's always been my philosophy, you know, we're doing it for the people, for the people. And you've done that Les. So I would miss you, but like Chris, I know where you live as well.
Thank you. Dave Parsons?
Thank you Les. I mean, yes, absolutely. Would like to echo everything that's been said. I think truly you have given your all in this role and that has brought results. And I think you've got a lot to be proud of Les, really have. One of the things I really would commend you for is your even-handedness. From our side of the fence as it were, you've always been willing to accept the challenge. You've never avoided it and you've always encouraged everyone to speak and air their views. So that's so important in this sort of role and I thank you very much for that. Thank you Les.
Thank you Dave. Denster? You're mute?
I'm obviously a relatively new entrant to the health and wellbeing role in my role as Chair of UHCW. But I really do want to thank you for the very open and frank way in which you welcomed me, the way in which we had very constructive discussions about NHS and local government working together. And I would really like to welcome the way in which you have appreciated the work of the NHS, how collaborative and fantastically helpful you've been during this very challenging period for all of us in this public health emergency. And I think, put it this way, you'll have a lot to put in your memoirs, should you decide to write any. And but I, as someone who has seen things from both sides of the fence, both from the local government side of the fence and from the NHS side of the fence. I think the way in which you've managed to build bridges between those entities as well as between Warwickshire and Coventry has been completely admirable. So I'll thank you very much for your personal approach to me, but also on a wider scale across the partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've no more speakers before me. Which is good. So can I thank you all for your far too kind words? When I first got involved in politics, I got involved because I wasn't prepared to stand on the outside on my own. I either got in there and helped to try and make a difference or I left it alone. So your kind words make me feel I've done a bit of that. So thank you all very much. Yes, I shall miss it all, but it's time to do something different. And thank you all for support. I haven't done this on my own. It's been partnerships. I'm a great believer in partnerships and if I made them a bit better for Warwickshire, then I've won a bit. So thank you all very much. That's the most kind. So we'll move on to item two, which is the Director of Public Health's annual report. And welcome Sadeh to present her first ever Warwickshire report to us. Thank you Sadeh.
Thank you Les. I'm just waiting for it to load. Can everybody see that?
Yes, I can see that. Yes, thanks.
That's great. Just before I launch into that, I was going to make a really quick comment. I am personally going to miss you Les, just because you're the first portfolio holder that I worked with as a Director of Public Health. I remember the first time I met you, I asked you what you wanted from a DPH. And you said, I don't want a DPH that fails. And I remember driving back home thinking, oh my God, he's going to give me a tough time. And there was no, it could not be further from the truth. You have been absolutely amazing. And whoever is going to step into the shoes has got really big shoes to fill. I don't know where you leave, but I'll ask now that I know there's a couple of people that know where you leave. So I'll launch into my report now. The first Director of Public Health Annual Report coming from me. I must say that this has been a real team effort. I've had some fantastic people in public health, in business intelligence, working on this, in design, that have made it happen. The title is fitting because it's been quite an exceptional year for us across the country and in Warwickshire. And you'll see why as we move along. We've chosen to bring the report as a draft to the Health and Wellbeing Board due to the tight turnaround and due to the team working on Covid-19 as well. And this will allow further edits as we move along. The report is due to be launched on the 22nd of March alongside an online gallery which showcases the experience of living through the pandemic in Warwickshire. The report itself includes five chapters and I will talk through some of the key highlights of each chapters as we go along. It begins with progress on 2019 Director's Public Health recommendations. So the last DPH Annual Report was produced by the interim Director of Public Health Helen King. And the report was based on, it was entitled Working for Wellbeing in Warwickshire and focused on the impact of work on health and wellbeing. It is expected that further progress will be made throughout 2021 and 22. But there's been a lot of progress that has been made already on last year's recommendations. So all health and wellbeing organisations have signed up to thrive at work. Warwickshire County Council has created a new health and wellbeing manager role. Wellbeing for Life relaunching partnership with Coventry City Council is planned for May 2021. And the Financial Inclusion Partnership have developed an actual plan to try and mitigate the impact of Covid-19 on vulnerable groups. So lots of progress has been made with recommendations that were put in the last Annual Report. So going into the content of this Annual Report, it begins as usual, this is customary. Most Annual Reports begin with an overview of the picture of health and wellbeing in Warwickshire. It breaks it down countywide and by district and borough. This year's chapter has a caveat. It's the most recently published data is delayed due to reporting delays and it doesn't reflect the impacts that Covid-19 might have had. So it is likely that the data, what we know about life expectancy for example, will change as and when the data catches up in the next few years. But overall, life expectancy at birth is still better in Warwickshire compared to the England average. But what we do know is that the pandemic has had a significant impact on life expectancy, especially for both males and females. Healthy life expectancy at birth in Warwickshire decreased, but increased for females. So the decrease for males, but increase for females between 2016 and 2018. But having said that, healthy life expectancy for both males and females in Warwickshire remains higher than the England average. Again, this chapter talks about deprivation, using the index of multiple deprivation that suggests that Warwickshire remains relatively not deprived compared to most local authorities. It ranks 121 out of 151, where one is the most deprived and 151 is the least deprived. But what we have found is that six more areas in Warwickshire are now the top 30% most deprived areas nationally compared to 2015. So we highlight in the report some of the public health challenges that Warwickshire continues to face. Hospital admissions as a result of self-harm remain significantly higher. Our dementia diagnosis rate is still lower than the national average. Prevalence of depression in adults still higher than the national average. We have a higher proportion of adults classified as overweight obese compared to the national average. And hospital admissions for alcohol specific conditions remains higher. So we still have a lot of work to do. Because of Covid and the mood, we've tried not to include too many improvements this year to reflect the current mood across the country and across the county as well in relation to the impacts, the real negative impacts, significant impacts that people have experienced as a result of Covid. So this is where the report starts to get interesting. It starts with a description of the timeline of events, when Covid-19 first came to Warwickshire. And I remember 23rd of February, when the first case was recorded. It was customary then for Public Health in England. It was all very double O seven. Public Health in England will ring the Director of Public Health and tell them you have your first case or you have your second case. That is not the case anymore. Now we have over 28,000 cases that has been recorded till date in Warwickshire, over 1,000 deaths, really green statistics. That chart that you see, that's probably not that clear, is captured within the report. And it's just a fantastic pictorial representation of the timeline of events and key notable events that have happened across Warwickshire and across the country from the start of the pandemic and captures some of what we've done till date to manage our response. We've established three place-based IMTs. Some of you are already, probably already aware of that. Across the county, north, south and rugby. We have a community engagement work stream with partnership meetings. We have a beacon response. We're part of one of 11 beacons that were set up to produce outbreak control plans. We have a seven day a week duty desk that's been running since September. We have six community testing sites and we've had hundreds of IMTs, outbreak and incident specific IMTs. We had 83 of these in January in Lom to manage the most significant outbreaks. So lots of work has been done across Warwickshire County Council, within Public Health and other parts of the council to support the response to the pandemic. Chapters three and four of the Annual Report, I personally find these chapters the most significant in terms of how we've used people's stories and case studies to illustrate the impact on people who have tested positive for Covid-19 and the impact of lockdown. And during our planning meetings, when we decided that I was going to focus this year's Annual Report on health inequalities and Covid, I wanted a separation and a distinction to be made between the impact of having Covid as an infection and the impact of lockdown. Because they both impact on people. They had impact on people in quite different ways. And that is how both chapters captured it. It also captures a lot of the positives that have emerged as a result of the pandemic. Sort of joint working and partnership with Carver to gather this case studies. When we first started to talk about it, we thought we might not get that many case studies. The opposite happened. We're completely inundated and we've been unable to include every single case study that we received in the actual report. And that is why there's going to be an online gallery where some of this will be featured. In terms of people who tested positive with Covid-19, again, we include case studies from a range of people. People who had mild disease, some people who had really severe disease and had to go into hospital and eventually ICU. Some people who have suffered with long Covid. But as I've always previously mentioned, over 20,000 people have tested positive, over 1,000 people have died. Most people who test positive will recover, about 10 to 15% of cases will progress to severe disease. And one in three people who have Covid are asymptomatic. And this probably for me is the biggest issue because our community testing sites which we set up, which has been a real testament to fantastic joint working across different parts of the council, is really designed to speak of people without symptoms of Covid-19. And they've done a fantastic job, not capturing here, but nearly 114,000- And they've done a fantastic job, not capturing here, but nearly 114,000 tests. Over 1,000 positives have been picked up as a result of asymptomatic testing for people without symptoms. Case studies show the importance of a range of support that we, that have been put in place to help people recover. Whilst NICE has developed rapid guidelines for the management of COVID-19, the support that has been put in place in Warwickshire is captured within this report. So we've got a long COVID support group, long COVID specialist clinics, access to future service. Each of the case studies ends with recommendations for improved services in the future or suggestions to do it differently in the future. So there are lots of bases about what NICE recommends, what we have done and what we might potentially do better in the future. So I wouldn't labour the points too much here. So as I've said before, chapter four describes the impact of lockdown and what sort of impact it's had on people. Again, this is quite an interesting chapter because it captures both the negatives and the positives. So there are some positives that have emerged from lockdown. So the chapter uses a population health model approach. So if you think about our population health model, that talks about the interplay between four different interconnected factors. The wider determinants of health, our health behaviours and lifestyle, an integrated health and care system and the places and communities we live in. If you look at the box on the right hand, it's on my right hand side on the slide. The green ticks are the positive impacts in terms of which aspect that we're looking at. So workplaces, adopted settings and service delivery to ensure that they're COVID secure has been a positive aspect of lockdown. Flexible working has been something that everybody has seen the positive impact in their lives. In terms of our health behaviours and lifestyles, most people have started to engage in much more physical activity. From my point of view, because there's probably nothing else to do with your time, so you will go out and exercise. In terms of the places and communities we live in, there has been an increase in family connections as well. And I was reading this and I chuckled to myself, thinking that's probably because there's nothing to do but to talk to each other now that you're all stuck at home together. But there has been a real positive impact demonstrated from lockdown. But that doesn't mean we should gloss over the negatives. There's been quite a number of negative impacts from lockdown as well. The impact on children that have had to stay at home for long periods. Impact on unemployment for people that have lost their jobs, there's been increase in debt. The impact on mental health and wellbeing, all of that is captured in this report as well. So I've talked about some of the positives. Something else that I probably need to highlight here has been the real community spirit that has emerged through lockdown, especially through volunteering. Our community testing sites will not be standing today without the support of our volunteers. There have been over nearly 300 volunteers currently supporting the community testing sites. And over 30 volunteers are volunteering as defenders to people who are clinically extremely vulnerable. We need to also highlight the response from our public sector. It has been absolutely amazing, the six local authorities, our districts and borough councils, coming into a local authority, a two-tier local authority for me. I had some nerves about working with districts and boroughs, having come from a unitary authority. And I must say that the willingness and the partnership that has emerged as a result of COVID is nothing short of extraordinary. So the positives are something that we actually absolutely need to celebrate. And then the way our businesses have just rallied around and adapted their practices, their COVID secure practices. Every time there's a site visit, they're so willing and so engaging. I must say here that the experience from other Directors of Public Health and other parts of the West Midlands has not been the same, especially in relation to business practices. Our businesses, the majority of them have been absolute troopers in terms of taking on our recommendations, working with our regulatory services and ensuring that they're doing the right thing. I've talked about some of the challenges of lockdown, I probably won't labour it again. But we talked about the impact on physical health and wellbeing, impact on mental health and wellbeing. The impact on mental health and wellbeing has been so pronounced that it is coming out, it's come out in a range of surveys, COVID-19 impact surveys, as a key priority for us. And it's a good thing that we have previously embedded this, included this as a priority in our health and wellbeing strategy going forward. I've also talked about the impact of lockdown on the wider determinants of health as well. So in order to further explore the impact of lockdown, we also use case studies. So if you recall, we use case studies to demonstrate the impact of getting a diagnosis of COVID-19, having mild disease, severe disease or long COVID. We've also used case studies to illustrate the impact of living through lockdown. And what we did was try and showcase people's experiences across five vulnerable groups. So we use case studies for people living with homelessness, loneliness and social isolation in older adults, young people with mental health needs, family poverty and adults with learning disabilities. And again, they just make for a really touching read, in my view. And just brings on the points that lockdown has had a significant impact on a lot of people. And this are just examples, the list is not exhaustive. This slide just captures some of the real examples and some of the impacts that people living with homelessness, for example, loneliness have experienced. And some of the actions that we took as a county council, working with our district and borough partners to tackle some of these issues. Again, young people with mental health needs was featured, family poverty was featured. Include some of these statistics as well in terms of number of families on low income in Warwickshire. What is not captured in the slides and which is included in the report again is what we have done as a county council, working with our partners to support people in these circumstances. Again, the same pattern for adults living with learning disabilities, real stories of joint collaborative efforts to support people. So the report includes five recommendations which I have made to reduce health inequalities in Warwickshire. When we first started to talk about health inequalities as a theme for the Director of Public Health Annual Report, it was literally a month into my post, so COVID was nowhere on the scene. I just knew that I wanted to do something on health inequalities. But then COVID came and added a different dimension to it. I remember using the term at one of my DPH Annual Report project board meetings that I would like something that shines a light on health inequalities. So COVID has more or less magnified existing inequalities and has given us the opportunity to bring it to the forefront. So the first recommendation is about including health in our policies. This is one of my ambitions when I took on the role. How do we ensure that health is embedded in everything we do, in all strategies? No matter how tenured the link, health can be embedded in everything that we do. Second recommendation about health inequalities and making sure that all health and wellbeing board partners commit to and deliver on an action plan to reduce health inequalities. Third recommendation around community engagement, we're seeing the impact of community engagement, how much we could do when we engage with our communities. And that's why there's a recommendation on community engagement, cannot be overemphasised. A fourth recommendation about the importance of prevention. In my experience in public health, we tend to pay lip service prevention. We all talk about it, the NHS throws it into everything they say. But when it comes to the actual embedding prevention into everything we do, we often seem to fall short. So there's a recommendation around making sure that we embed prevention into everything we do. We have opportunities going into the future with an emerging ICS to do things differently and start to embed prevention in commissioning decisions, for example. And the final recommendation is around communication. The case studies have shown the value of connecting people with the right services to support them. So the need to raise awareness, again, cannot be overemphasised. And that's my final slide. The report is due to be published online on the week starting 22nd of March. There will be an online gallery to share further stories. I did talk about the fact that we received much more stories than we thought we were going to get, which is absolutely fantastic. We would have a data dashboard that will follow the indicators over time. And feedback will should be sent to Katie Wilson, who has been absolutely amazing in putting all of this together, working with a bigger team. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you. And I'll stop sharing my screen now.
Thank you, Shadé. Can I really thank you for actually a wonderful report, done under very difficult conditions? And really say, I don't think Warwickshire and our region would be where it is with our excellent COVID position if it wasn't for you. So you've had a year with us, almost a baptism of fire, but you've excelled. And we are really grateful and thank you to you for what you've produced. And you then produced as an excellent report. You keep talking about equalities, you've really given us a ground place to step off on and make a difference. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Parsons.
Oh, thank you, Les. Thank you, Shadé. That was a really excellent presentation. And I'm hoping that we can actually have the slide circulated to all members. I know the full report is coming out, but I think that way through with the slides is a very good way of looking at the report. And it's very worthwhile.
Yeah, we know that, Dave. Everything will come out. We'll send this out now as well and then the final one when you, when you...
Yeah, absolutely. That's great. And can I absolutely commend your focus on health inequalities? I suspect things are going to get worse before they get better, but you know, we'll hope for the best. But you know, that's a really important focus, but I think it's the focus of this area, really. Thank you very much for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Geoff Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Les. Thank you, Les. Shadé, that was very interesting. I'm sure what you say about the public sector is right. You know, there has been tremendous coming together and working together to resist the ravages of COVID. But don't let's forget the private sector. If it weren't for supermarkets, chemists, the corner shop, blokes, usually blokes, driving vans and trucks, we wouldn't be where we are. I mean, I think it's natural to focus on the public sector because that's where we are at the moment. But we do need to just step aside and think about the importance of people who've kept us fed and supplied. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I noticed that, those comments, Constable Morgan.
Sir Chris.
Yes, thanks very much, Les. And Shadé, congratulations on your report. Two thoughts, and they may not be for this report. But one is, are we able to quantify the impact on people's health? Not directly or indeed indirectly, as you've been describing from COVID, but around other medical conditions? Because we know people with cancer, heart disease, et cetera, have often been delayed from receiving a diagnosis and a treatment. And that will be reflected in the health of our population and being able to put some numbers on that. So it's sometimes quoted that for every person who very sadly has died with COVID, another person has died from another condition because of the knock-on effects of COVID. And the second comment is, I wonder if there's more to do in terms of drawing out the learning from COVID? Because this will not be the last pandemic of the 21st century. And maybe if there's a silver lining, if that's not an inappropriate phrase to use, it is that we can get so much out of the experience of the last year or so that will mean we're better prepared next time round. And I think if there's any way of bringing out some of those constructive lessons, that will be really helpful. Thank you.
I think your second point is a really valuable one. And I'm going to take that back to the project board and see whether or not we might be able to potentially incorporate that. The first point around quantifying the impact on people's health. Again, you're right, that might not be something for the Annual Report, but it is reflected in the Annual Report. So it was impossible for me to cover everything that was in it. But there is a section that highlights and brings out the fact that in lots of people who ordinarily have had elective procedures, for example, have had it cancelled, access to dentistry, physiotherapy, all of that appears to have suffered as a result of the pandemic. So that is captured within the report. In terms of quantifying naturally, potentially, possibly years of life lost, for example. That is beyond the scope of this report, but that's something I believe we need to think about.
Okay, Chris. Yeah, I've got another hand. Geoff Morgan, hands still up, are you?
Apologies, Les.
You're okay? Are there any other comments? From anyone? I've got no more hands up. So in which case, we have two tasks. One is to note and support the draft report as we've seen it today and the timetable to make it public in March. And our second recommendation is to agree to endorse the recommendations which Shadé has so able to set out. And I think they're totally appropriate, in line with the report and the way we need to go. So are we all agreed that we do that, please? Anybody does not agree? No? Shadé? It's all yours to carry on. Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you for your report. It really was excellent. Thank you. If we could then move on to our second report, which is our new, again in draft, Health and Wellbeing Strategy, and that's Nigel to present it. And I think Gemma as well.
Yes, thanks, Les. I think it's great. There's some real synergy, I think, between Shadé's excellent report and our new Health and Wellbeing Strategy. Actually highlights some of the issues that we hope the strategy will help to address. Hopefully this will be very familiar to members of the board, although it will look slightly different. Well, actually it looks very different from the draft version they saw back in September. And obviously it's also developed since the update in January. So this is about really the post-consultation version of the report and a little bit about the changes that have been made as a result of the consultation. So it's about getting to really the stage of final approval. If we could move on, Gemma. Yeah, so consultation. Consultation took place over a period between the end of November, really, and the beginning of January. And obviously, that's quite a, it was quite an interesting period, I think it's fair to say, in terms of all kinds of other things were going on. So I think the fact that we have well over 500 responses to the report, to the consultation, is a really positive message. They were fairly evenly spread, the largest number from Warwick, then Stratford and North Warwickshire. Generally, good mix of ethnicity and disability. And probably the only area where we could have gone with slightly more responses was amongst younger age groups. But I think in the context that we were operating in at that time, I think, you know, it is a good reflection, I think, of Warwickshire in terms of the feedback. And actually, that feedback was remarkably positive. You'll see that in terms of the ambitions, all of the percentage degrees are kind of high 80s, early 90s in terms of percentages. People strongly support those ambitions. And the majority of people supported as well our priorities over the next two years. And I think, just a reminder really, because it's a question that's come to me a couple of times. We did say that we would set out our priorities for the first couple of years of the strategy, rather than for the full five-year period. Because I think it was important that we felt this wasn't a strategy that would sit on a shelf. That actually after that, during that two years, we would review, we would refocus, we would seek to deliver on those priorities and move on to whatever the new priorities were at the time. And I think there is something that COVID has added validity to that. I think we're probably less confident about what the world might look like and what we might be focusing on in five years' time than we would have been pre-COVID. So I think that that opportunity to kind of refresh, revitalise the strategy as we go through. It's lifespan, is the phrase I've been looking for. I think that will be really helpful. As I said, strong support for those priorities, particularly the priority about mental health and wellbeing. And of course, COVID has really shone a light, as I think as Shadé said, on mental health issues. So you've got a couple of pieces of feedback here in terms of where we think, I suppose where the consultation found that the strategy could be strengthened. And so some action has been taken to consider these. I should point out that you do have in the appendix, appendix one of the report, you do have... appendix one of the report, you do have the full consultation response analysis. But those two key things, really, better reflecting the partnership approach to delivery, I think that's really important. I think it's really important that we strengthened the references to the voluntary community sector, who are, you know, really key partners in terms of delivering the strategy. And you'll see that particularly Ambition Two has been rewritten to emphasise the role there. And then the need to work collaboratively with a wide range of diverse communities, and that focus on a community-based approach. And again, in this case, Ambition Three has been strengthened to reflect that. Yeah, so some feedback around, I suppose, the strategy. It's really difficult with strategies, isn't it? How much you focus on the big picture and how much you focus on the detailed kind of implementation, and the monitoring and the measures, and knowing how you've got there. So this has been strengthened within the strategy. But I think the key thing is that every health and wellbeing partnership across the three places in Warwickshire will develop an implementation plan, and that links really closely to the work around place planning that's already ongoing. And actually, one of the things we've agreed to do is to pull together the place leads, to share that kind of their delivery intentions, and how we use those places to deliver the overall strategy. Of course, there will be some things that are delivered on a county-wide basis, too, that will sit alongside that place-based delivery. The planner page, always good to be able to see this. And I think this is a really helpful reminder, really, of where we started in this development work. Most people on this call would have been at the various workshops we held, facilitated by the King's Fund, to develop that integrated, what I refer to as the King's Fund model, I'm sure others have different names for it, but around our population health framework. And that real emphasis across those all four quadrants. And of course, for us as a Health and Wellbeing Board, the really key bits are the intersections between them and where those different pieces meet. So what next? First of all, we need feedback. So it's really important that we provide feedback to respondents. Something that some of us were involved in a conversation about yesterday, about how we make sure people understand that their voices have been heard, and how we have made changes in response to their opinions and their contributions. So particularly, the 'you said we did' kind of section on the website will be a key part of that. And then the next stage is back to our Health and Wellbeing Executive and those place partnerships to develop a detailed delivery plans, which I am sure the Health and Wellbeing Board will want to monitor over time as we implement that and seek to develop and achieve our aims. And of course, the way that, the thing that will help them to do that is the outcomes framework that we'll be developing. I think that's all I wanted to say in terms of the strategy overall. I did want to say that, you know, although I have the kind of the privilege of presenting this, it represents the work of a significant number of people who've contributed to bringing it forward. And I particularly wanted to thank Gemma for her work in kind of coordinating all that and bringing it all together, because I think we have a strategy that meets the needs of Warwickshire at this time. I think we can evidence where it's come from and why people should feel that, or why we think people will feel that it meets those needs, and a strategy that is clear and coherent and readable. Happy to take any questions or comments, Chair.
Thank you, Nigel. An excellent report in my view. I think it is a step change for us, and it's very positive as to where we want to lead and move forward to. And can I just say that it has been presented to leaders of all our boroughs and districts, and they have endorsed it as a good partnership document as we move forward. Stella, did you want to?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you. And thank you very much, Nigel, for the presentation. Mine is a comment almost to all of us around this virtual table, but in particular linking to Sir Chris Hahn, in that key for me is how we make both the Warwickshire Health and Wellbeing Strategy and the Coventry Health and Wellbeing Strategy link in to our ICS/Health and Care partnership work. I think, as everyone knows, I think we all have our moments of tearing our hair out about the complexity of structures and, you know, overlapping circles between our various relationships, partnerships and organisations. And I think one of the key things to make sure that the outcomes that you want in Warwickshire are effective, but the outcomes that we all want across the system overall, is being able to trace the lines between whatever actions we agree either as individual institutions, so the County Council, UHCW, whoever, or collectively, so that we can trace what impact we think those actions are going to have, which of those actions are going to impact first, and which, as a lot of them obviously will be much longer term, how we're going to see those feed through the system. So I think there's quite an interesting job of, I don't know whether it's macrame or whether it's knitting, but some combination, some combination of that, which means something drops out at the end of all this, which we can clearly explain to the public what the outcome of our collective action is supposed to achieve, and in what time scales we're going to achieve it. Thank you.
Nigel, did you want to respond?
No, I need to say that I agree with all that. I think it is really important. I think the model, so we spoke for quite a long time about how we develop an implementation plan for the strategy. And I think the end point that we got to, which is that actually the strategy should effectively be, sorry, the implementation plan should effectively be a combination of the three implementation plans at place, which are already multi-agency plans, with anything that we need to pick up at a county-wide level, to make sure, sitting alongside that, to make sure that actually we are as embedded and we're trying to do things once and have one set of priorities. And I think that we can get there. In terms of Coventry, it becomes slightly more complex. I suppose the benefit we have is that we have two Health and Wellbeing Strategies that have been developed against the same set of principles, so both based on the King's Fund model, both with a focus on wider determinants and on health inequalities. And I think there are definitely opportunities for us to align an enormous amount of the work, although remaining, you know, the fact that we are slightly different kind of places, and that there will need to be a little bit of variation. But actually, probably no more variation than there is between the South Place and the Rugby Place, or the Rugby Place and the North.
Okay, Stella.
Yes, thank you. No, I still think this is going to be, I think that's very helpful, but I think it's going to be, let's put it this way, an interesting area.
I think it's probably a whole full meeting for the joint meeting as we had this week. It could be an all-day one. I'll leave it as a legacy. Sarah Restrick.
Oh, thanks. You sort of picked up on my point, really, at the end there, Nigel. So thanks, thanks for this. I can see you really trying to make clear something that is complex, as Stella's described. So I think for something that's a really public-facing document, I think this is, you know, this is really, really good, whilst not underplaying the complexities that will be as a strategy document. I think we produce, we, I take no credit for it, you and your team have produced something, something really, really good. I think my comment was going to be about the ensuring freedom at place in our, in our system for Rugby, Warwickshire North and South Warwickshire. Within that overarching framework will be an interesting sort of positioning, I guess, when we bring in Coventry, who have a different, a different overall strategy. And so potentially, whilst all under the umbrella of our, of our place forum and our objectives, may feel that they've got slightly more place-based direction. So I think, but you touched on that at the end, and I can, the clear thought has gone into how the different places within Warwickshire can implement perhaps differently the strategy, but still stick to the strategic principles. So working out to do and that sort of allowance of freedom to reach the right objectives. But yeah, I just wanted to say as a, as a public-facing document and something for us all to look at and start to really understand. I think this is, this has gone a lot further than we've gone before. So, so thank you. It's really positive.
Thanks, Sarah. Just on your point about our three Warwickshire places, I did have a meeting with the three chairs and sort of the effective officers of them, what, 10 days ago now, to talk through this report and how it sits within their thinking. And so that is something that I'll leave behind, is where they are going to meet regularly, which will pick up some of the issues you say about how they do what they need to do. But keep in mind this, I suppose for the future, not for me, is that Coventry will be invited probably at that point, so they could have an informal chat, because it's not a minute-long meeting, it's just to get together and talk about where we go, maybe one to think about.
Yeah, can I just add, it's really helpful feedback. Thank you, Sarah. I think one of the things that I wanted to pick up as well, I think absolutely there has to be a freedom of place to implement in a way that delivers the outcomes that works for that particular place. I think that that's one part of the complex equation. I think the other part of the complex equation is that place will want to do lots of things that are not in the strategy. And I think we need to be conscious of that, and we need to let them get on with that, and actually not try to pull everything under the umbrella. So we have a clear set of ambitions here, we have a clear set of priorities. I think we need to pick up from the place plans the stuff that is relevant to those priorities, and we need to leave the other things for place to get on with, I suppose, outside of this, and not try to, not try to do everything. But yeah, other than that, I think comments are really helpful. And I think it is, you know, I think I would reiterate that it is a genuine kind of partnership effort to put it all together.
Thank you, Nigel. Any other comment? I've got no, nobody else on my screen? No? So we have four recommendations. One is to note the outcomes from the public consultation, which you've got in appendix one, and Nigel has explained, to approve the final strategy that we've got before us today, and the three priority areas which we have been through, and support that we do give, give it an annual review to make certain it is still pertinent and up to date, but not totally redo it every time like we have at the moment. And support, as we've just been discussing, development of the local place-based implementation plans through the three local places, which we've basically discussed. Are we all in agreement that is the way forward? Yeah, I can see nobody saying no. So that is what we will do and move forward. And thank you, Nigel. And let's record our thanks to everybody that's taken part to get this strategy to where it is. It's very good. Thank you. So we will then move on to another vital strategy, which is our homelessness strategy in conjunction with our borough and districts. And welcome Emily Fernandez to introduce this item. And good afternoon, Lisa as well.
Good afternoon, Les. Good afternoon, Les. Just before talking about this really important strategy, I'd like to lend my voice to the others as well, and to say thank you for all the help and support that you've given to us in taking forward our work on homelessness. Again, you've been a champion for that. You've got behind us. You've helped us shape our views. You've helped us get this to where it is today. So I know I'll speak on behalf of all of the heads of housing from all the districts and boroughs and families as well, when I say from the bottom of my heart, a big thank you, and we wish you all the best for the future.
Thank you, that's very...
This paper actually comes at a really interesting time for us all, with many of the real problems that Covid has brought to us being really at focus for this community. And we've called the strategy document Preventing Homelessness. And homelessness means so many different things to many of us. If I'll just draw you just for a second to think about what home means to you, what, many of you are actually sitting in your homes right now. And I know when I speak to people, home is not about bricks and water. Home is about the family that's inside with us. It's a place where we can be ourselves. It's a place where we can relax. When we're walking down the street, we don't see a row of homes, we see a row of houses. And homelessness encompasses a lot of different situations. It covers people fleeing domestic abuse. It covers people who are coming to the end of their private sector tenancy. It covers young people who can no longer stay in the family home. And of course, at its most literal meaning, it's people who are living out underneath the stars, those who are rough sleepers. And this strategy comes at a really important time for us. This weekend in Warwick, we lost three of our former rough sleepers. Two of those died as a result of drug abuse, and one because of alcohol abuse. This is because county lines have increased the amount that they were putting into their packets that they were selling for £10. And our former rough sleepers took the whole lot and sadly lost their lives as a result of that. But what's really key is that two of those individuals had got their own home. They'd been through the temporary arrangements we put in place for Covid, and were now part of the house community. The other was living in a settled relationship with his girlfriend and couldn't be described any longer as being street homeless. So homelessness in this context is not just a housing issue. It's a problem that belongs to all of us, and we all have to work together to try and solve it. And that's what makes this strategy and this partnership approach so important. Thanks, Emily. So for some time now, all of the agencies, you can see along the bottom of the slides, have been working to try and think about what we need to do to try and address some of those issues that I've just mentioned. And back in, the back end of 2018, let's all remember, coming to a conference that was held in the outskirts of Rugby, that brought together people from statutory services, from the voluntary sector, from the volunteer community, to look at different aspects of homelessness. And we held a number of different workshops that are listed there, looking at substance misuse, young people and care leavers, health and homelessness, rough sleeping, domestic abuse. And we had some great keynote speakers, Dr Nigel Hewitt from the Pathway, and Victoria Kell came along from Government to speak to us and to share their ideas and thoughts. And those delegates got together in workshops and formed their ideas about what we should all be doing as statutory agencies to help them and for us to help ourselves to try and combat homelessness. Thanks, Emily. And so that was probably the first time that this board took a paper from the districts and boroughs and Emily, and that sought approval from you to form a homeless strategic group reporting directly into this board, and for that to start to work to develop a county-wide strategy on tackling and reducing homelessness. And we also began to look into the feasibility of developing the Pathway Model in Warwickshire, which was to combat the inappropriate discharges back out into homelessness, really, and to stop the cycle that we see of homeless people ending up in hospital, when other processes would have been, and options would have been better for them. Thank you, Emily. When other other processes would have been um and options would have been better for them, thank you Emily. So we've got a wide range of partners involved alongside the county council, all the districts and borough councils. We've got a number of other agencies such as the Police and Crime Commissioner, the Warwickshire and West Mersey um Population Service. And and the Phil Projects together with uh the N- the NHS and Warwickshire Cares. And and those groups have uh started to to um look at the different strands. Uh by breaking into smaller task and finish groups, so those groups have have really sort of started to unpick what those issues are across Warwickshire. Particularly, and started to engage then with the voluntary sector and uh colleagues in health. Um although although it's been fairly limited and we've had to develop new and virtual ways of trying to do that because of Covid. We've had some really useful and vibrant discussions and some great ideas have emerged. About sorts of things that we we could be doing, both big things and little things to try and make things a bit better. And each of the um the chapter leads has started to uh raise the issues at other related boards and and other meetings. Such as myself, I've taken a lot of the issues to the Warwickshire Reoffending, Reducing Reoffending Board, for example, and um. The MAPA Strategic Management Board. We've then taken uh some thoughts and and the draft strategy around to some countywide engagements and with your citizens space to do that for us. And you can see some of the responses that we we've got, but there's, I think we can say overwhelming uh agreements. With people either agreeing wholly or to some extent about the sorts of priorities that we identified. Um uh for each of the the different sort of themes that were beginning to come out. And the the um some of the changes that we made were around thinking about education, for example. Uh with offenders trying to um make sure that there was some form of education. So that they could understand, offenders could understand what opportunities exist prior to release. Helping to prepare people leaving prison with new and different life skills that would help them reacclimatise and integrate back into society and try and find employment. And and although veterans were mentioned, we tried to make better linkages, uh thanks to the the feedback that we received. Uh particularly mentioning the 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 mental health challenges that very often accompany the uh um. The issues for veterans and drawing reference of course to the military uh community covenant, which requires housing authorities. Uh to prioritise uh veterans, and although it's housing allocations and policy matters for for the districts and boroughs. And work is happening on the on uh elsewhere on this, it's nevertheless it was important to reference within the within the strategy. And although we really wanted to uh to embed service user involvement, we were unable to do that in a Covid secure way. Um certainly during waves one and two lockdowns. And therefore, what we've done is made a commitment to involving the service users in parts of the action plan. Um obviously, we're appropriating to try and establish a service user um involvement mechanism, uh to enable them to give us their feedback. Uh and and get the really unique and and integral perspective into the delivery of these strategy recommendations. Thanks Emily. So the Preventing Homelessness strategy is split into five different themes and these emerged and can be referenced right back to the. Conference that we had back in twenty eighteen, and they are health, that was that was one of the the biggest drivers for us. Financial inclusion, young people, uh a major issue uh for all for all of us really, domestic abuse. And offending. And those recommendations and actions are being aligned as we speak to to existing partnerships to help us to strengthen the the delivery. And I was really pleased to see that the Warwickshire Reducing Reoffending Board asked to see the uh homelessness strategy and they were. They were really uh wanting to take any of the recommendations to feed it into the Reducing Reoffending Action Plan. So that was really really good to see that that was happening, and you can see there that the the Safe Accommodation Working Group for Domestic Abuse. We're looking at their recommendations, the Financial Inclusion Partnership, and of course the Health and 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 Wellbeing Board. Here, you you'll obviously be really interested to see those sort of health um. Um recommendations that come out, um and I don't know whether John Coleman's here today, but obviously he and his team. Have got a really interest in the young people um aspects of all of this, and we'll continue to have dialogue with him and the team. To make sure that that they're progressed, thanks Emily. Um and then no strategy would really be complete without a vision and some principles. So what we're what we're really trying to pr- to achieve, um and how would we how would we do that? So again, we we've tried to work collaboratively on all of the the thematic chapters. Developing a series of recommendations with input from so many organisations who've helped us shape the direction of the strategy, and I think we're all. Really grateful to our 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 partners in other statutory agencies, but also the 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 fantastic. Vol- voluntary and community sector that we've got here across Warwickshire, without which we couldn't have have really delivered all the. All the services that we needed to do um um during the Covid pandemic. Um so we we've come together with to form these five um strategic visions about trying to reduce some of those inequalities. Improving the health of people at risk of homelessness, um and those who are actually homeless or sleeping rough in Warwickshire. To enhance and improve our services that prevent homelessness among young people, because surely not becoming homeless in the first place is far. Um the better option, to prevent domestic abuse and the crisis homelessness resulting from it wherever we. We can, although we recognise that's not possible. To deliver better focused housing and related support services for those at risk of homelessness and those who are leaving prison. And to ensure that a wide range of appropriate services are available to support those at risk of homelessness due to financial difficulties. And now, if we just turn to think about just one of those uh strategic chapters for for a moment, and the one that's closest. To the Health and Wellbeing Board, uh and and Emily will come in and talk to you about the the health component, over to you Emily.
Great, thanks Lisa, yeah, so um I guess for the purpose of this presentation, as Lisa said. It would it's important to kind of take everyone through a bit of a run through of the evidence that sits behind this, particularly in relation to um. The impact of homelessness on health, so many of you will be. Oh will probably be familiar with some of this, but um it's important to set the context around how the evidence. That we've looked at informs the strategy and the approach um that I'm going to talk about today. Has been the same approach that we've taken with all of the chapters within the strategy. So all um chapters had a um a lead, um which comprised of all of the heads of housing plus myself for the health chapter. And what we did was we we reviewed all kind of published um papers and journals and publications. To really look up nationally um and regionally and locally, what does the evidence tell us in terms of the impact. Of homelessness on the um subject um matter focused on in each of the chapters. So in terms of health, um we you can see here that the causes of um homelessness. In relation that have the biggest impact on health include things like poverty, um adverse childhood experiences. Mental health and substance misuse, having a personal history of violence, um and involvement in the criminal justice system. And alcohol misuse with a strong association with initiation and persistence of homelessness. Now, these causes are not exclusive to health, but obviously go on to have quite a significant impact on individuals' health. So in terms of young people, the risk factors that we've identified also include um things like family conflict. Victimization, non heterosexual identity and experience of being in a child welfare system. And for these risk factors for young people, you can see that all of these would actually also constitute an adverse childhood experience. So what is important to highlight within the evidence, um and probably a caveat to some of this information. Is when looking at the evidence in terms of health and homelessness, there was often little differentiation between being homeless. Temporarily housed and rough sleeping, so sometimes that was made very clear in the evidence, other times they were um kind of referred to in a generic way. Um but what was very clear in the evidence actually was um people experiencing rough sleeping. And what this actually does and impacts on their average age of death, so for males it's forty four years and for females forty two years. Compared to aged seventy six and eighty one respectively in the general population, which as you can see is significantly um lower. Causes of excess mortality for our homeless population in include things such as HIV and TB infections. Heart disease, substance misuse, and then also external factors around unintentional injuries. Which can include suicide and poisoning, um and this can often be from medication or illicit illicit substances. Um and then in terms of um homeless population, generally they have a higher exposure. Exposure to risk factors compared to the um general population, and those are our usual suspects in terms of alcohol, smoking. Drugs and mental health problems, but they're of often significantly worse for the homeless population. Okay, so the homeless population's physical health, mental health, prevalence of infectious diseases. And age-related impairments are all worse compared to the general population. And there is also evidence to to suggest that their poor health status is exacerbated by their poor access to health services. One interesting example um that we looked at from systematic review, looked at the prevalence of mental disorders among. The homeless population in Western countries, and that showed that the most common mental disorders were classed as. Alcohol and drug dependence, and that the prevalence estimates for psychosis was as high as depression. Now, this is a marked contrast to the prevalence estimates for psychosis in the general population, where psychosis is always generally lower. Than depression. Okay, um so we know that homeless populations are higher users of acute services, which include A and E and inpatient admissions. And as Lisa mentioned, one of the recommendations that we brought to the Health and Wellbeing Board um. Was around conducting pathway needs assessments across our acute trusts. So so far in Warwickshire, we've completed these for UHCW and SWIFT. And we'll be doing the same pieces of work, um repeating that work within CWPT and Georgia Hospital this year. Now, evidence from our needs assessments from UHCW and SWIFT so far actually mirror the published evidence around. Um our homeless populations being higher users of acute services, and this naturally has a knock-on effect on cost. Which is estimated from national evidence to be four times higher compared to the general population, and actually eight times higher for inpatient services. So some of the published evidence and local evidence does also indicate that on occasion, and this is less frequently. Um but on occasion, sometimes people are discharged onto the streets without their underlying health conditions. Being necessarily met, now that in itself is quite a broad statement, because some of the really complex homeless people. Um who end up being kind of admitted into hospital, um it would almost be impossible to discharge them. Having sorted out all of their complex issues, but there's much more work to be done collaboratively across the health system to support these individuals. So um the recommendations from the pathway needs assessment, along with other health specific interventions. Such as Warwickshire's homeless nursing service teams will all seek to begin to address some of these challenges. Now, I'm just going to take you through the specific health recommendations, so these recommendations have been been developed. Um as as um the rest of the recommendations in the strategy, but in partnership with um lots of health partners who have really. Um you know, understood some of the challenges and been really open to discussing some of the challenges issues that this population faces. So I'll just take you through these really quickly, so the first recommendation is around supporting the mobilisation of the mental health enhanced care pathway. In Warwickshire, now this is our mental health nursing service in Warwickshire for the homeless population. And it's actually been in operation for about eighteen months, and we have an arrangement whereby two mental health nurses are seconded from. CWPT into Warwickshire's P three street outreach service. Um and that's been an invaluable service during the um last twelve months in the kind of under the shadow of the Covid nineteen pandemic. So going forward, CWPT are actually going to subsume these roles back in-house within their Community Transformation Programme. And the partnership will continue to work closely with the trust and the community involuntary sector to further develop this service. And learn lessons from the first eighteen months of delivery. So secondly, um there's a recommendation around holding collaboratively. Collaborative discussions with the trust CWPT around options for prioritise prioritising mental health support for people. Who are homeless and rough sleeping, so I guess this is similar to the veterans pathway in CWPT. Um we've agreed to work in partnership with the trust to explore options around whether prioritising mental health services. For this population is a realistic option and establishing the ways in which these individuals can be supported during a crisis. Thirdly, supporting the development and embedding of the dual diagnosis protocol and pathways into mental health. And drug and alcohol services, so whilst the dual diagnosis pathway and protocol is established. When working and drawing this strategy together, um one of the things that was highlighted was there was perhaps. A lack of awareness for support organisations around this protocol, so we thought it would be really good to have a focus on this. To understand where there are gaps in um perhaps knowledge and information and how we can work collaboratively. In order to gain maximum appropriate support for this homeless population, when we're trying to support them through their drug and alcohol journeys. Fourthly, um we want to consider system-wide options to address the physical health needs of people who are homeless and rough sleeping. As you've already heard throughout the other two presentations this afternoon, um you know, Covid has really exacerbated some of these inequalities. However, with our um homeless population, um I think Covid probably has benefited partners in some ways. And what I mean by that is it's um really shone a light on some of those um really complex individuals who. Prior to Covid, perhaps were not on our radar quite as much or were not engaging with statutory and community voluntary sector organisations. Quite as much, so Covid actually has improved what we know about the physical health of this population. And our access to this population has been increased due to the government's everyone in directive. However, I think as we emerge from the pandemic, we need to be able to, I guess, harness that knowledge and those positive relationships. That we've all established and continue to work together to address the population's health needs. We have our wonderful physical health outreach nurses that are provided by SWIFT, and they have been invaluable during the past twelve months of the pandemic. Um however, there wa- there are wider um challenges around supporting the population to access primary care appropriately. And um we need to work on that going forwards, and also their appropriate access to primary care in turn. Should impact on the volume of acute care emergency admissions. So fifthly, um we want to ensure access to pharmacies, and this would largely be through exploring the use of behaviour. Policies, so our research in drawing this strategy together has highlighted that sometimes people's behaviour can lead them to being banned. From local pharmacies, and we want to work with partners to ensure access to pharmacies or no access to pharmacies if they do um get asked not to attend. That that doesn't become a barrier to people's drug and alcohol recovery, and and one of the tools that we'd like to explore is the use of behaviour policies. Sixthly, something around maintaining good dental health, it's really important for us to fully understand the pathways to ensure that people who are homeless. Can access dental treatment in a timely manner and avoid emergency treatment, because this population doesn't access health services traditionally. Often, um when uh people are struggling, particularly with um dental challenges. We get notified of this quite late and therefore, much like um access to secondary care, the treatment then becomes really costly. And this can be avoided understanding those pathways in more detail and sharing that information across partnerships. Seventhly, something about facilitating entry into residential rehabilitation and inpatient detoxification services. And by this, we mean exploring opportunities for people who are homeless or sleeping rough to access both commissioned and privately funded detox and rehab services and ensuring a quality-assured approach to both. One of the things that the Covid pandemic has highlighted in supporting our most complex individuals, if they require a detox service or rehab service, there have been opportunities during the past twelve months whereby organisations or even their family members have sought to pay for a private service. And what we found through our Warwickshire County Council commissioned detox and rehab services is not all of these providers are on our framework contract. So if a family member or a community voluntary sector organisation gets the funds together, we want to be able to support them to make the right choice of rehab or detox services through ensuring a quality-assured approach. And our final health recommendation is around improving the accessibility of services available for homeless individuals who may have a learning disability or autism. Now, this can be achieved by increasing awareness of autism and learning disability issues amongst our practitioners, providing accessible and easy re-documentation, ensuring reasonable adjustments to services are made by improving links with relevant health and social care practitioners, and increasing access to advocacy services to ensure individuals are not inappropriately excluded from accessing suitable housing. I'm just going to hand you back over to Lisa for the last slide. Lisa? Lisa, you're on.
Yeah. That's been the same of this year, hasn't it? Yes, like like any strategy, there are challenges in in delivering this out. And we'll just put some of them down here. Resources in terms of staff when we're all really busy running about trying to deal with Covid and and other service priorities. Money and budgets is a massive challenge for us, both in in terms of trying to align budgets to support the objectives of the strategy, but also in trying to maintain the levels of of funding that go that that go into services that are allied to delivery of the of the strategy. So around the, I mean, we all have heard about the the cuts to the proposed cuts to the health and housing-related support budgets. And that is going to inevitably introduce some real challenges for us going forward, particularly in trying to to maintain support that so many of our vulnerable people desperately require. Covid's brought some real challenges. And we've 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 heard from Shaday earlier about what some of those were and what the picture of that looked like. And we were at the sharp end in terms of dealing with people out on the streets. And through the Everyone In initiative, we've done, we've turned tricks and been able to do some absolutely fantastic things. And we've seen some people who are long-term entrenched rough sleepers being able to be brought in and are now in settled accommodation. Certainly one of them locally, when the the shops opened up, was was found just coming out of a secondhand shop. And when the member of staff inquired as to why he was there, he'd been buying some little trinkets for his window ledge, which is absolutely fantastic. But it's also meant that we've had to deal with with a lot of fallout as well through Covid by trying to accommodate some people who really aren't ready for accommodation. And that's manifested itself in in increased county lines, murders, stabbings, all sorts of of things that again have really tested us as partners and tried our partnerships. But that's one of the things that has stayed strong and in fact has grown stronger as a result of Covid and those partnerships. We've got, there's a ton of different pressures, a ton of different priorities on both on staff teams, on services, on budgets and money and funding. And I think that that's going to be really difficult for us to try and garner all of these in into the right directions to try and support our homelessness strategy going forward into the future. And our partnerships have been at times challenging, as as those agencies have have had other priorities to deal with and other pressures placed upon them locally and and by government as well. And at times, it's it has been trying, a bit like trying to herd cats and trying to keep everybody on the end of the bait, to keep them interested in in this in this issue. Because sure as eggs are eggs, once we're once we're over this, those agencies will be back at our door saying, what are you going to do about about our homeless people? So so it's important that we try and embed those partnerships. And that's why it's so important for the Health and Wellbeing Board to have got hold of this agenda and really to act as our fulcrum around which we we try and can try and broker some some strength around that. So it's not going to be easy. But but I know that together we can we can try and do this and try and maintain that sort of strength. So what we're going to do next? Well, we've reinstated again, I don't know whether reinstated is the is the right word because it never really went away, but we've re-energised it. We've re-energised that homelessness strategic group now to focus on the Strategy Action Plan and to really drill down on what is it that we can do that will make that difference and make it better for us all. And more importantly, for for homeless people going forward. We've nominated both a housing and a non-housing lead to each chapter. And that's really to try and tie those partners in and to get them to get some some grip and some buy-in to those to those recommendations and to to enable us to to deliver on those. Because one person on their own can't, very often can't do that. We're looking at developing some smaller working groups so that we can we can keep that expertise going, we can keep that dialogue going, we can keep that interest in the in those work areas. And more more appropriately, so that we get the support for those recommendations and those action points, so that we get them delivered and taken forward. And as we've we've mentioned before, we're aligning those, we're trying to, did somebody say macrame earlier on? I thought that was really good. We are trying to macrame or knit or crochet our recommendations and priorities and get those embedded into into other strategic groups and action plans and forums. Again, to just strengthen that that partnership delivery. We've we've really formed a a a really clear opinion that no one agency can solve homelessness. And we've got we've got to work together and we've got and and our strength, that that problem solved is a problem halved in in trying to tackle these issues. So that strategic group will look now at the recommendations and how those actually should be prioritised. We've got a whole shopping list of things that we need to do. But some will will get will have a better impact than than others and we need to just home down which those are based on their effectiveness to try and reduce homelessness and available in within the available resources. So I think that that kind of concludes our presentation Les. And we're delighted really to be able to to come to you. We didn't think we would with Covid. We thought all that city is on the back shelf, but we've we've continued, we've pressed on. And I'm really pleased that we were able to deliver it to your last meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Emily. And and I apologise, Lisa, I should have introduced you at the at the beginning because Lisa is the head of housing at Warwickshire and a real a real proponent of our strategy and and keeping it alive and moving alongside Emily. So thank you both very much for a great presentation. And yes, Housing Nation resport is a service, but it is on hold as we are. But we will need to get together and and look at what we really do with that and how we make that a more effective service. So there's another one on the list for for you as as you move move forward. Judy?
I think Lisa will be surprised and I'll probably first on the on the comments on this. I'm really, really pleased with this. I think so many elected members will say that one of the biggest part of our our caseload is homelessness in all its shapes and forms and how it impacts on the whole of of your authority. So I really welcome it. And I know, again, you won't be surprised to know that I particularly welcome chapter six, which is on domestic abuse. Because I've always said many meetings about my concerns with it. And really, it's just a question, and it's a bit linked to what Sarah said about Coventry and Warwickshire. I know we we have residents of Warwickshire who go into refuges in Coventry. And I presume we do a similar backwards and forwards. So how is this strategy going to work with our residents who actually are placing refugees out of out of county? You know, I presume half Coventry got a similar strategy. I'm saying Coventry because that's one I know. I don't know if it occurs in in South Warwickshire where they go to other refuges and other areas. Obviously, wherever possible, we try to to offer refuge place in in Warwickshire. So I'm just interested how we work with Coventry with this, as there's a Coventry Warwickshire Health and Wellbeing Board. And I'm also a little bit concerned about, you know, the government's domestic abuse bill, which saying certainly sounds strange because it strengthens things, but I know if we have a duty of care to to a domestic abuse victim, I think from any area, who who may need to come to us. And I'm worried about the there's only so many houses or so many places, you know, in an area, whichever borough it is. So while I welcome it, I also have great concerns as a district councillor on how we can possibly accommodate everybody. Yeah, it's cross border work and I'm really think that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Do you want me to say?
Yeah, you can kick off then Lisa.
I mean, I I think Nick Cad's on, so Nick might want to kind of come in on this as well. But obviously, with the domestic abuse bill, there's a proposal to set up a safe accommodation working group, which the Commissioner for Domestic Abuse Services, Emma Guest, is leading on. And obviously, that will involve looking at some of those things. You've mentioned councillor Falc, in particular, those cross-border issues. So it's it's it feels like the stars have aligned. It's a really good opportunity to really kind of have a focus, think about some of those domestic abuse and homeless related challenges. And the domestic abuse bill gives us a real opportunity to do that across partnerships and across organisational boundaries as well.
Okay, thank you. Nick Cad, are you on the call? Did you did you want to comment? Somebody suggest?
I don't know whether he's he's quite made it made it on councillor cable, but 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 I think, you know, the 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 issue is that, you know, I'm going to use the term women because there's nine times out of ten, it is women. And sometimes it really is appropriate for for women to be to be accommodated, even if it's temporarily, as to the district, particularly if there are stalking issues. So yeah, I mean, we will try wherever possible, large place in refuge in within in the district. Not every woman wants or needs to go to a refuge, you know, many will just accept and be perfectly okay in 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 different forms of temporary accommodation that the districts and boroughs have. But making sure that they get the access to the right support and help is is crucial. And that's absolutely crucial. And yes, you're right, that that women fleeing domestic abuse or people fleeing domestic abuse can approach any any council. That's that's changing legislation. They can go anywhere they need to. And again, that's that's as a result of 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 seeing too many domestic homicides and government taking the 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 view really that that women should be able to go wherever it is that they feel safe to do so. We don't encounter, you know, huge numbers of out of areas. And my understanding from talking to colleagues elsewhere is that very often seaside towns are those who suffer the worst from that with with people wanting to gravitate back to to places where they had happy childhood holidays. And that gives them a different feeling of of safety. But it's certainly something that we're alive through in Warwickshire. I know that we have taken women fleeing abuse and accommodated them in in the locality. And sometimes those women have then returned to their place of origin. And sometimes they've settled within our within our districts. So we'll help them to do that wherever wherever we need to.
Thank you, Lisa. I've got John Bowman and Becky Hale. John?
Hey, can you put me further down the list, Chairman? I've just been had a call. Now I've got to go and deal with, thank you.
That's fine. I'll I'll take Becky next.
That's probably helpful because my link's to the last discussion about domestic abuse. Just wanted to share where we are around the recommissioning of domestic abuse services. So as Emily indicated, we are recommissioning and working on the recommissioning of our domestic abuse support services, including accommodation-based support. We've also been allocated, as has every other local authority in the country, additional money to support the the implementation of the domestic abuse bill. And so I think it's really timely as we start to understand what we need to do in response to that bill. How do we best use the resources that are made available for for us across Warwickshire? And how does that support the priorities in the strategy that has just been presented to us? So I think it is an opportunity for us to work together and make sure that that resource is is best used to support people who are experiencing domestic abuse and also that focus around homelessness and accommodation-based support. So I just wanted to to kind of share where we are at. And there will be more information and engagement around that over the course of the next few months.
Thanks, Becky. Have I got any other other speakers?
Yes, please, Chairman. I did have my hand up.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, carry on.
Thanks very much. Thank you. I did just want to say, first of all, thank you for a great presentation. There was so much in there. The thing I just wanted to come on to was was that pathway project. It would seem to me that it's an ideal opportunity, I mean, unfortunate, someone's had to be admitted to hospital. It's an ideal opportunity to sort sort things out for them and try and get them on a better pathway. But obviously, there are pressures in the hospital for discharge. And I wonder how that that dichotomy is being is being addressed. Is there a sort of halfway house that people go to while we sort everything out? It seems terrible to think that people who've been ill are then discharged back onto the street. And I just wondered how this works. How do you cope with the pressure on hospitals alongside the need to sort out quite complex problems for these individuals?
So if I if I could just come in on that, councillor Bao. So the the pathway needs assessments that we're working on actually, I guess, tries to quantify the number of people who are considered as homeless who access acute health services, whether that's through an emergency A and E admission or an inpatient admission. And as you rightly say, dealing with those individuals then when they're in hospital in A and E, for all the world, our NHS colleagues are not going to be able to solve everything and then kind of discharge them. There's real challenges there. So there's there's a few different ways that we're looking at that. One is to actually do the needs assessment to understand the numbers and the challenges that our health colleagues are dealing with. But also, we have got a hospital liaison service that is in operation at the moment whereby we have three members of staff, one north, one rugby, one south, that work across the acute trusts and housing. So if somebody is in hospital and is not able to be discharged because there's a challenge with housing or homelessness or an adaptation issue, that hospital liaison officer will almost work as the intermediary between health and housing to try and solve some of those challenges. So it's not a silver bullet, but it's definitely an approach that we're trying to build more support around those individuals.
So just about, is there is there somewhere these people can be discharged to rather than the street when they've still got issues to be sorted out?
I think there are opportunities for, you know, if if you're still thinking, if somebody is clinically well, there are kind of step-down bed opportunities. But even even with those, there still needs to be a place for somebody to go to at the end of that. And obviously, districts and boroughs, you know, do everything in their powers to, you know, to be able to accommodate those individuals. I guess sometimes there's challenges. I guess sometimes there's challenges, challenging circumstances that surround all of us. And some of those individuals unfortunately, you know, will fall through that net. And and that's why we're just so thankful in Warwickshire that we've got such a fantastic, you know, partnership arrangement. Working to support homeless individuals, including the community voluntary sector.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. John, you're back.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm really come out to speak because of the oblique reference that Lisa made to resources. And in particular, the resources moving forward. And it's been drawn to my attention that while Warwickshire County Council worked hard with us to develop this strategy, this partnership. They have at the same time cut the housing relation related support budget by £1 million.
No.
Twenty five per cent of the current budget, which will be introduced in 2024/5. And it's a vital component in the homelessness prevention agenda. And with our agencies such as P3 supporting vulnerable people in supportive accommodation. Or floating support to help sustain tenancies. There is a real risk that homelessness will increase following these budget cuts. If I could just complete this, the actual wording in Warwickshire County Council report states. Redesign the housing related support offer. Replace housing related support offer with appropriate care delivery consistent with standard council provision. And I don't think anyone knows what that actually means. The cut is £500,000 in 24/5 and £500,000 in 25/6. Is it possible we can have a detailed response on this issue? So people can understand or the partnership can understand and certainly councillors could. How this cut will be overcome by other means? Now, I'm speaking in a sense out of past experience, when setting a budget for four years. Very few words are put against very big impacts in terms of finance. And I suspect this is on a very large spreadsheet somewhere and it's gone towards making up the council's next four year budget plan. So I just wondered if if it's possible to understand how this could all be reconciled with the excellent work that we've had a report on today.
Yeah, I'll respond to that, John. That was a a budget cut put forward, which I I discussed with officers and said was not. But as as part of those discussions, it was said to me that there is this this service needed a relook on where it can be made more effective. That would be across homelessness and everywhere else we use it. Which is why the pause has been put into the budget so that the redesign and re and the money needed can be properly assessed. So we have a modern service to to deliver it and that is why there is the pause. And at that point, the whole service, when that work has been done, which is why I've got two years. The whole service will be reassessed and the resources it needs will be up to date and looked at properly. Because that's a piece of work that now needs to be done. It is not a statutory service. It is another statutory service that Warwickshire provides. And the object of the pause which I had put in for two years. Flags up that this is a service that does need a full review and effectiveness, which is what the words you've read out say. So that will happen at the start of the next municipal year.
And will it involve the people who delivered the report today?
It will involve everybody that uses housing related support. That's our social services, all our borough and district housing. And everybody else that uses that that service. But like many services, it's due for review and this is flagging it up.
And they've got two years, yeah?
There's two years to get that work done.
Yeah.
And and see what, and also by then, the excellent homelessness work will be also further on. And as Becky's indicated on the abuse and so on, there's so much work going on. This needs relating to all that work and seeing what the the real need and requirement is and what the service needs to look like. So that will happen, John, I can assure you.
Thank you.
And anyone else like like to comment? In which case, Lisa and Emily really, sorry, Sally Bragg.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, obviously, I was going to echo some of John's comments that he's just made. Obviously, we're really proud of the collaborative working with the districts and boroughs. And, you know, this multi-agency approach to actually help homeless prevention. I welcome your comments, councillor Cabor. And I really do think that this budget needs to be watched closely. To make sure that the services can be provided in the future. And thank you once again for this really good collaborative working on the contents of the report today. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thanks, Sally. I also just just know on on the chat that Chris Baines put up the the final report on his excellent rights of access project. Are on their website, so I urge everybody to to look at that. Did you want to comment on that, Chris?
No, no, I think you'll stand on its own. I'm happy to talk to people about what's in the report afterwards.
Thanks, Chris. And thanks for that piece of work. It is very good. Okay, then, so we've we've a number of recommendations to note the contents and and again, thank Lisa and Emily and the partnership for all for all they are doing. I believe this is one of our best of our Warwickshire partnerships. That's got a grip of the subject, knows where it's going, has got a great, great way forward. To agree to the strategic vision and recommendations as we've had them presented. The true multi-agency approach and welcome the comment from Darren of CWPT on 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 the chat and thank for their support. And support the Homelessness Strategic Group to develop a full action plan to work forwards the for 2020, 21, 22. So are we all in agreement with that? Because this is a project that the the board owns. We are the owners of this 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 project because it is multi-agency. Are we all agreed? Looks like we are. There is no dissent. So thanks very much and thank you very much and we will keep moving forward both. Thank you. Thank you really very much. So we then just move on to our final item, which is the report of the subcommittee. Which we which we called to get the Better Care Fund back back to the necessary authorities. At the end of the day, I'll move those as laid out. Are we all agreed? In which case, thank you very much. Thank you for your forbearance. We are at the end of the meeting. Thank you for all your support and help over my time as Chair. It has been a pleasure to chair this group and I really feel collectively we have made a difference. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chris.